They just tried to align this year.
Yeah, they did. I'm not sure what they're gonna, they're gonna do next semester, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay, it's 5:30, so we'll begin. Welcome to the Bella Vista City Council Work Session for Monday, May 17th. I'm gonna jump around a bit because Mr. Tapp has a family commitment. So I'm going to start, if I may, with Ordinance C, which is partially vacating Public Street right of way along Sunset Drive as a form of reference. You may want to have a look at at the last page, item number six. It's a survey and it tells you there how many feet of the vacation, but Mr. Tapp, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. When Sunset, when the slope fell there, the engineers engineered the wall and in order to make that fit, it's, those are some huge pieces of rock that held that wall in place. They, they went over the property line by six inches. And so in order to keep the, the city out of the maintenance business on that wall and to remove our liability on the wall, we proposed vacating a portion of our right of way there beyond the six inches to make it two feet, so that there's no question that the wall is entirely on Dr. Hull's property. So we had that, or actually Dr. Hull had that surveyed. You'll see that in the packet showing, it's, it's very minimal, but when we were out there, the engineer showed us where the wall was about six inches over. So we prepared two feet to make up for that.
Thank you. Any questions at all? Okay, I'll skip now to the discussion items because the two that are on the agenda actually belong to Mr. Tapp. The first one, if you would, sir, is a Trails update.
Thank you, sir. The two Trail projects, well, we've got three Trail projects going. Two of them, Central Trails are all but done. The, the only remaining part of the Central Trails, other than the RDOT tunnel over here on Lancashire, is the connection under the bridge at Pinion Creek. And the flood did some damage here a couple of weeks ago and they're finishing up some, some final touches on that and then, then that will be complete. The Blowing Springs to Metfield paved connector, we did a, we walked the entire trail last week to do a final punch list with all of the engineers and the contractor. And it's, it's pretty much complete aside from some small issues like sod and a couple of areas where they're going to extend a fence, some headwalls, some, some extra dirt on those, cleaning out some culverts. And so we don't have a timeframe, an exact date of when that's going to be complete, but there are people riding the trail already. But it, it should be very soon, in the next few weeks, they should be finishing that up. And then the, yeah, the, the guard rail that was brought up right there near Dartmoor, we, we showed that to the engineers and they, they've showed us a couple of drawings of, of guard rails that, that would meet spec and they're, they're also throwing out an idea of a maybe a raised curb, a curb and gutter out there to prevent cars from getting off of the road. So they're looking at both of those right now, trying to decide which one would, would fit better because it's pretty tight. And they have sent those two, two contractors to get a bid on those and we're waiting to hear back on that. But, but for the most part, that, the flood here a few weeks ago messed up a lot of sod. So as soon as they get that all back in place, they'll be putting the final touches on that, on that connector.
And the third?
The third one is the Mercy Way Bridge right of way, the Greenway, Resurrect Greenway Extension. We've gotten some offers. Did you get those signed?
Mr. Kelly's looking at it.
Okay. So the, the consultant on that has, has got some offers prepared on a few of those tracks on Mercy Way. And there's still a couple to remain that, that are still with the appraiser. And those are being reviewed by the appraiser right now. And utility relocation is, we have contracts in place for that. So we're just waiting to get the go-ahead from the consultant on the right of way, temporary and permanent construction to begin maybe moving some utilities over there. So that project is, although slow, is progressing and we're hopeful to see some offers in the hands of the property owners over the next couple of weeks.
Hey Doug, can I ask you a question on these letters since you brought it up? The check, if they accept these offers, will the checks come directly from the state or will they come through us?
They'll, they'll come through us out of the grant account.
All right. So, all right. That, that makes a difference in how, some wording in there. So I just, really for general purposes, but I just, I had you here. I wanted to ask you that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Anything you want to change, just let me know. We can send that back over to the consultant.
And I've also been contacted by Tom Johnson at the P O A. They're in discussion with Trail Blazers about the possibility of putting in an equivalent to Tweety Bird on the back forty so that it is more user-friendly to families, kids, and those who need to be ADA compliant. So more on that, but I think that'll be a good thing for the back forty because it's certainly a very popular trail. Sorry for the commotion. Mr. Wozniak has just joined us here. Are there any questions on trails for Mr. Tapp?
I, I had a question. When you're, Doug, when you're talking about the Blowing Springs to Metfield, and you talk about maybe a guard rail, maybe a raised curb. So I gather the concept the police chief had brought up isn't one of the things being considered. I think that concept was for.
Yeah, they, they, we showed that to them and they decided that those will be a main, a maintenance hardship and those will be getting hit. And we would have to be replacing those. So the city, since that trail meets the guideline book for cycling along roadways, we're still trying to figure out if the guard rail or the curb or whatever we had can be paid for with the grant funds or if that's going to have to come out of city funds. We don't know the answer to that yet because the engineers are telling us we agreed to build it to plan and they expected to plan and now we're asking for the guard rail after the trail is done. So they're still mulling around the best option on, on those. But the ballers, they said they, they didn't like that. The engineers from neither firm liked that.
Yeah, if you look over by Casey's on Reardon, you can see the plastic ballers are always being hit and broken. Mr. Wills?
One question, one question about that section we were just talking about on, on Houston over there. I think that five-foot separation probably is assumed to be in an urban setting where you would have a edge of pavement and then a relatively level area up to the gradient of the sidewalk or the side path. The situation I think that we have here is probably one that has a ditch between those two structures. If I'm not mistaken, in the area you're talking about, and I'm wondering if the five-foot is really adequate. And that may be the reason they're thinking about, what, a guard rail?
Yes, sir. It's a two-to-one grade there and there's no ditch, but it does meet, I, I measured probably the ten or twelve closest places and it's, it's, it's right at five foot on the nose. They had it at four when they originally got ready to pour the concrete and the engineers made them move it to five. And I think they actually covered up some utilities and getting it to five. So the drainage in the, in the ditch and the utilities are what kept them from moving that further away from the road than five feet.
What, what is the, the, the significance of the edge of pavement being right next to the ditch? Is that going to be a traffic hazard for us? And perhaps Chief Graves might have a view on that only because the edge of pavement drops into that ditch as I recall.
There's no ditch.
And it drops down into the trail area. There's no, there's no ditch in that area. The ditch is beyond the trail in that area. You'd have to run across the trail to get into the ditch. But I think that, I think they're just wanting something to deter maybe the line of sight here, uh, from getting you over off the road. Because sidewalks are that close to the road all over town. If you go to Bentonville, there's, there's sidewalks all over town. They're closer than that to the road. But the, you know, that's a thirty, I think thirty or thirty-five mile per hour zone. And the day we were there, there were cars going faster than that and we stood around the edge. And it's not something you want to, you don't want to stand there all day with cars whipping by forty-five or fifty. So something, they do agree, something needs to be done. They're just trying to come up with the best, the best solution.
Did they look at a curb section, a, a farmed and paved curb section on the roadway?
Yes, sir. They're, they're looking at curb and gutter as an option. I think they're actually leaning that way versus the guard rail. Because the guard rail would have a lot more maintenance over the lifetime.
Yeah.
I, you know, my biggest concern, even if it's five feet, and I'm sorry I kept nailing you for that, but five feet is five feet. My concern is people will be distracted when people walk in their dogs and their bikes and that's fine. And you know, with the sidewalk close to Bentonville, you couldn't get me walking someone in sidewalks. It's so close to the road. My concern is, and after doing traffic for a hundred years, is somebody gets distracted, they get the front wheels off and they're going to pull it back. And the first thing that's going to happen, because you've got sides, it's going to be loose, is the rear end of the car is going to swing around and end up on the path. That's my biggest concern. You know, not so much that they're going to do it on purpose, but when you try to bring it back, the back end is going to come around, especially if you get a front wheel drive. And that's my biggest concern. If you try to curb, man, it's downhill. They, they all agree that there needs to be something there. When you put a guard rail in there, they're saying that it's going to be within the two, anything within two feet of the road edge. So they're trying to keep it, trying to keep it so the car doesn't hit it and the bike doesn't hit it. You know, and when they, when you come up with this book and they say, say five feet, well, have they ever come here and seen what our five feet is opposed to somebody else in the curbs and everything else? You follow anybody down the street, there's hardly anybody on their own side of the road for any length of time.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Tapp? Okay. We'll move to the septic update, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. Septic ordinance is progressing. This Councilman Wills and I and Derek have met a couple of times since the last city council meeting and we've made some revisions and changed some language. And I believe the city attorney has also reviewed the ordinance and recommended some changes and so. Well, I think you talked to Larry and Larry told me that you said there's one of the letters on the ordinance we may need to take off.
We talked about it, but I, as far as you know, I haven't ever received a copy of what.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I would just, I, I mean, I know we're targeting June for this. So I need that with plenty of time to, to do legal things to it if I need to. More so than our normal deadline because that only gives me about a day to do it and I, I gotta have more than that. So.
Sure. We're gonna, we're gonna meet one more time with the Realtor and builder group that, that's been helping us with this. Probably early to mid next, maybe late this week or early to mid next week, and then we can get that to you. So you should have a month, have it a month ahead of time.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Anything else on septic?
Larry, you, you want to add anything to that discussion, our last meeting?
No, the, the, there were four, four parts to it, as I recall, or five parts to it. The first part dealt with new, new building, new residential building permit applications. The, the second part dealt with additions or modifications to existing buildings. The third one was addressing pending applications in-house. And that's the one I think that we probably will recommend to the group to totally cancel that and, and not try and deal with that as a reach back, if you will, before the effective date of the ordinance. And, and we'll, we can talk with the group about that, Doug. The, the, the fourth item, fourth item deals with the requirement for doing a septic system audit on existing residential buildings to ensure that they're in, in suitable operating condition. In other words, that we're not dealing with issuing an addition or expansion on a site that has a failing septic system. And the last part is penalties. So those are the five parts that were in the draft for dealing with the current situation.
Okay. And I can get you all a copy of that as soon as we have our final meeting with the ad hoc group. And I'll send that out to you. I'll see you'll have a couple of weeks to look at it, but what council meeting.
Alrighty. Mr. Wills, I want to thank you for your participation in this. This is really an urgent and a very serious concern. Especially the last one that you mentioned where we have a transfer or a sale. I have a neighbor on my street who's caught in that bind right now and it's, it's very expensive to get out of it. So thank you for that. Okay, Doug, if you want to head off. Please feel free to do so.
Ordinance D, Derek's going to handle that one.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So we'll go to Warden and Say, which is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability and formal price quotes through March of 2022. This is something that we do every year. If you look at the, at the memorandum that Mike Button prepared for city council, you'll see that it's that time of year when the street department stockpiles road salt and sand for the upcoming inclement weather season. As in the past, these materials are almost impossible to ascertain through competitive bidding process due to the fact vendors have committed to other customers and are not willing to take on new customers. So we look for brokers. In other words, he uses the spot market or sand and gravel and needs the flexibility in order to place an order if, if he comes across a good price and quantity. That, and as I say, we do this every, every year about this time. Are there any questions at all? Okay, ordinance B is amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to adopt a new section, ten dash thirty-nine open burning for purposes of lock clearing to provide further protections to the public from the nuisance and danger of fire and smoke and to provide minimum penalties for the violation thereof and for other purposes. Mr. Snow, this is yours. Chief Sims is in the room with us. The one thing that has popped out in my mind and, and others that are surrounding the table here is item number six C, a permit applicant required in this section shall be issued at least six hours prior to the time the control burn is to commence. I'm not quite sure how that's going to work with six hours prior to.
That was. Chief, Chief Simms, can you?
Yeah, that was taken out. Jerry, that was taken out. In your last amendment, that was taken out of the amendment, from the ordinance.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know how that got back in there, but I'm looking at your amended ordinance you said on the twelve. They don't have that in there.
In Jason's defense, we made so many changes and had so many revisions that I can understand how something got back in that, that we took out. And to Jason, I apologize for, for so many, said so many changes.
That's, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, that'd be hard to, to do, I think.
We had, I, I've got, I mean, we sent out a, a re-revised version by email about two hours ago or so. And it, it incorporated some final changes that Jerry wanted to see. I have, we, as Jerry said, we had kind of added and subtracted to this thing to the point where I need to, I need to do a little better drafting it, not change the meaning of it, but we use different phrases for the same thing. We need to kind of clean it up like that in terms of vocabulary and things like that. And, and so I'm gonna do that and that would be what you'll see in your final agenda. I don't want to do anything that's going to change any meaning, but I do want to point out a couple of things as this is written. Because I, it may not be intended, but I want to, I think it probably needs to be looked at. First of all, we say permit applications must, pardon, excuse me, permit applicant must contact the Bella Vista Fire Department at the phone number for application forms. And then we say what the applicants must provide. I think we'd want to say they may contact the fire department by phone because I don't know how we would get them a form over the phone. And I don't know that we would want to preclude someone from coming to the main office and seeking an application. So I, I think we might want to say may because a paper form is going to be very important, as we'll see here in a minute with some of the other requirements here. For example, in A two, I'd like to change it to say, no controlled burn fire shall be located within one hundred feet of any structure or street. That's a little rephrasing of what we've got. Number three, I like, I would suggest it say, burning material must be extinguished completely by dark or a representative of the landowner must remain until flames are no longer visible. We say that the landowner must be on-site all night to fire watch, but if the fire's still not out overnight, we want someone to be there as long as there's potential fire. That's just a, probably just a little technical thing, but I, I think it's significant. In number five, I would suggest that that first sentence where we say surrounding properties must be considered, I would really recommend that that sentence be stricken and, and leave the remaining. So we would say number five, permits will not be issued for properties in high hazard areas or high population areas, including but not limited to apartments, apartment complexes, hospitals, schools, or skilled nursing facilities. If we say surrounding properties must be considered, I don't really know what that means. I mean, we are considering everything. The fire department will, when it's make, using its discretion to grant one of these permits. But I, I think it, it probably could be avoided. And we can still, what we're, what we're thinking by, by leaving that remaining part in there. I'm a little, I got a little heartburn about when we say high population areas because I don't really know what that means either. I don't know what, when population becomes high. I don't know what a high hazard area would be other than, I mean, I'm sure the fire department would know what's a high hazard area for purposes of fire. So that's why I'm not suggesting it be taken out, but it may not be entirely clear to an applicant. We're going to remove subs five C, the six-hour requirement. We're going to take that out as per our discussion just a few moments ago. We say in D, the requirements for controlled burning for purposes of light clearing must be printed on the application for a permit. That, that's okay. We can, we can require that. We are going to preclude ever being able to do an electronic application, I think, because we're not going to be able to print the requirements on an electronic application. And I'm not sure we might not want to at some point leave ourselves open to be able to do that. I would also suggest that anytime we put that kind of requirement back on us, like we've got to print this on the application, we've got to provide an ordinance copy to, to, to an applicant, we are creating potential technical hurdles that could keep someone from being held accountable. Because in, is, in E, for example, we say any person applying for a, a building permit shall be provided a copy of the ordinance. So if I've got a violator, I'm going to have to go to court. I'm going to have to prove that they were provided a copy of an ordinance. And that's going to require a CDS person to testify to that. In addition to whatever fire official might need to testify to explain however the fire was out of control or not in compliance. So it, and it also is going to be a paperwork issue potentially for CDS and the fire department. So I, I just want to kind of put a word of caution out there about when we require ourselves to jump through some hoops. We, we do make it a little harder to enforce things. In E, I'm going to recommend a rephrasing of this at a minimum to say, any person applying for a permit under this section or for a building permit shall be provided a copy of this ordinance. And I would then remove the requirement of, let's see, what was I going to do? I, I was going to suggest a removal of the requirement to print the, the requirements on the permit application and just say they would get a copy of the ordinance itself when they apply or for a building permit. So that's going to, when they come to the fire department to get a permit, they're going to get a copy of the ordinance. If they go to the, if they get a building permit with, at CDS, they will be given a copy of the ordinance with the idea that they may very well in turn need to get a fire department permit, which in turn they would get another copy of the ordinance because they're going to have to apply for that. But in any event, I, that's fine. I think if we at some point did this electronically, we certainly could some way to where a link, a copy ordinance could be electronically on there. So I think we're leaving the door open to do that. Which I'm not sure we exactly would want to do long-term. And then, this is an edit to my own, what I wrote. I, in F, we, we would say no permit shall be issued for a controlled burn when any lawful burn ban is in effect. And so I think that again, that's just a point of clarity. Saying we're not going to permit something with there's otherwise a lawful burn ban in it. So some of that is just tile and usage and better quality. I don't really think a lot of it is substantive. I, I would like for y'all to think about this issue of providing copies as a condition. But in, in any event, certainly can do that. And if that's what the council wants to do, we can, we can make that happen. And just the way it currently is presented, I think you're going to be, if you don't modify a little bit, you're going to be locked into a paperwork situation, which I'm not sure you want to get into long-term. So I've said a lot more than I intended to say on that one, but I'm going to leave you with that.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this thing's taken on like a life of its own, kind of. It just feels, it just way too complicated, way too cumbersome. Maybe too much judgment in, in some areas. I just, it feels like, you know, like the road to nowhere to me. So I like say, I'm, I'm just as smoke. I can't stand it, particularly wood burning smoke, things like that chokes me up. I'm, I'm real sensitive to it and I know a lot of individuals are. You know, I haven't like, trying to put all this together and, and we, there's, so there's this one hundred foot minimum, right, from any structure, street, et cetera. That's going to take a large number of lots out of play anyway, you know, where you're not going to be able to burn on the lot. You know, and, and I don't even know if this is the right thing to do, but to me, it almost would be more simple, just to burn clearing for a new home or residential, commercial building and then only allow like burning for yard waste, leaves, small branches, you know, maybe, you know, not in excess of three inches or something like that. And to me, it just feels, I know there are places in Bella Vista you can burn, but there are a heck of a lot of places you're not going to be able to. So some people are going to have to go through the, the expense of hauling it off and other people are not going to have to go. They're, this is going to, this is probably going to cause a lot of consternation from within the building community once this thing rolls out, if in fact it is passed. I don't know. I just, I get it. I mean, I sincerely, I get it, but I don't know. This having, go through it, everything that you did, it just doesn't feel right to me. When I say it doesn't feel, this doesn't feel good. You know, in the way it's being approached right now. I don't know. Anyone else?
Anybody? John?
The only thing I, I wanted to mention was it has a very specific phone number in there with an extension. The sense it's an ordinance, if you ever change your phone system or something of that nature, then you have a, you know, something outmoded in your ordinance. So I don't know if you want to put a phone number in there.
I'm also concerned, how is a, how does a builder get the permit if he decides to do it on a weekend and he hasn't pulled it on the Thursday or the Friday? Because I, I drive around town on the weekend and I see some burns going on. Mr. Wills?
My question relates to item subpart B. And in the last, well, I guess in the last two lines, it talks about on behalf of the property owner or contractor. well, I guess in the last two lines, it talks about on behalf of the par, the owner or contractor to cause a controlled burn without first having obtained a permit. Whoops. I bet I'm in the wrong place. I am. It's an A four. Fire must be controllable by the person on site with water or heavy equipment. I go back to an email that we received from Attorney Kelly back on March second, and he was generous enough to give us some review of current code requirements for burning in section ten dash thirty eight. And one of the things that caught my eye in his comments were that burning after sunset is prohibited, burning without a physical presence of a person on site to monitor for as long as open flames are visible is prohibited. And then in addition, and here's my key point, a water source sufficient to control the fire must be readily available during the burn. And my question is, how, how is that defined? And I, and I say this from the standpoint is that hydrants and Bella Vista are typically a thousand foot separation. Water meters typically are not set on the property after the building permit is issued until the contractor comes in, pays his permit fees and and has it set by the water utility. And I don't know if there's a timing requirement and Derek might have a thought on that. But how do we determine what a water source sufficient to control the fire must be readily available really means? Where do we define water source sufficiency? Is it having a, a, a meter setter with a meter there, but no hose hooked up or no ability to hook up the hose? Does it mean having a fired fire hydrant within so many feet of the property, or if it's not in front of the property or right adjacent to it? Do they have to have a hose run from that hydrant to the lot so that we know that they have water available? I'm trying to get my arms around that water source efficiency issue. And in item four, it talks about water on the site or water to put out to control the fire. So I'm, I'm not picking on, I'm not picking on the language or anything. I'm just trying to understand what water source sufficiency is and how that's defined in this item four here. Or the intent.
You're asking me, I would think that's something that Chief Sims needs to answer. He's the one that knows.
Just as I said before, everybody, this ordinance was built towards somebody burning a house already constructed, already have a water source, burning reliefs outside is what this, what this ordinance was developed for originally. Now, changing some of this to put the heavy equipment in there will satisfy the requirements for a large lot burn or a large lot clearing. Most, most large lots are being cleared does not have a water source. That's why some of that terminology you've seen about heavy equipment is very important to be added to the current ordinance.
Chief, we talked about this earlier, and I think it's important. Is it your, we, we currently have an ordinance. You, I know you've made, you just mentioned, and you've mentioned to me previously, you think that in addition to water, that the, the use of heavy equipment on site should be a sufficient protection. Do you think that with just adding that to what we've got currently? We were covered, or do you think there needs to be more than just that?
At the way it's going, I would probably, that'd be the main thing that'd be satisfying. The ordinance would be to have the equipment on site.
All right. So what you're saying is what we've got now plus adding the heavy equipment.
That and also having a fire department inspect the large lot burns. That way we can decide whether or not they can burn or not. That would be another thing I would, I would go ahead and say that we.
So, okay, all right. Okay.
So the suggestion, as I understand it, is to take out the water part of it there and leave it only as heavy equipment. If we leave it in or you're not going to have the heavy equipment left there when the burn is taking place on the lot.
No, you need the water. If you, Larry, if you got a burn, if you guys might do a controlled burn and you're, they need to have water on site. Okay. And most of those houses that are built have water on site. So we require somebody that's burning their brush or limbs or leaves, or whatever they're doing, to have a water hose handy when they have a already constructed home. But on a large site, you can handle that with, with heavy equipment. You can clear around it. They do a nice clearing around it and that's something we can inspect for and make sure that they're following the guidelines.
I want to, I want to remind the council that the current provisions does not call for the issuance of a permit from the fire department. It just requires people to contact the fire department. It doesn't require a permit. So if we want to require inspection, which is reasonable, then I think we would need to switch that to a permit, in which case we're getting more into what we've already, what this new draft. Let me make sure the council understands something else. This new draft that you have is only for burning that's done for purposes of lot clearing. These provisions are not going to count toward leaf burning or your trimmings and things like that. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
So my suggestion in, in that regard, since it, since it's intended for lot clearing, burning issues, not your brush pile in the backyard of an existing dwelling, that we take out the word water in there and only leave heavy equipment if the, if the chief is is inclined to say heavy equipment will control that fire better than water. Because we haven't defined the water availability factor enough. And if the heavy equipment is not there and you're burning, burning on the lot for clearing, you may not have the mechanism or the means to put out the fire.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Well, if you, if you take out, I mean, they, a source of water could be a, could be a tank. I mean, could be a a large tank of water, wouldn't necessarily have to be a a hookup to a water source, it could be a large tank, but if you take out the water source and you, you're requiring a person to have a bike or something on site to, to deal with the fire. So I don't want to taking the water out would accomplish anything, but I think it's important that we try to get this in a format that we can, that we can consider at the next council meeting because we're coming into the to the, what could be the critical burn period. If it ever quits raining, well, then obviously we're going to have some potentially some dry weather. I mean, that always does happen. In the next few months, they're going to be, the conditions are going to change where fire danger is going to be more critical than probably what it is right now.
Go ahead. I, I wanted to say, I do appreciate Councilmember Snow's interest in this topic. I've been interested in it myself. But this is now the second work session where we've had really extensive conversation about the process. And what I recall from the first time we went through this, while we agreed at the time was the process doesn't seem to be tight enough yet. It doesn't seem to be cohesive in a way that everybody's ready to sign off on it. And so what was going to happen from the last meeting to this one was we were going to go back and work the process. And so I, I see some attempt that that's been made, but yet when we get here tonight, it feels like we're still really in the same boat. We don't have the process tightened up yet. I'm going to go back to the question of what is the problem we're trying to solve? And for me, when I started off with interest in this, there were really three basic things. Did we have an ordinance against unattended fires? We do. Do we have a law against fires after dark? We do. Are there adequate penalties in place to keep builders from being repeat offenders on this? And I think maybe, I'm, I'm not sure if that was the case. I don't know if these penalties are being improved. But those were the things that I was looking for. For me, that was the problem we were trying to solve. And, and I think the sooner we can answer those three, we can, we can check those three boxes, the better off we are. I don't think it's ready yet. As it's presented here tonight, I, I'm interested in the topic. I'm ready to support it, but I don't think it's ready. The process is not ready, it seems.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
Hey Derek, real quick, what's a typical, I mean, I say typical, I know it's very typical, but the size of a residential lot? Hundred by hundred and thirty?
What's a third to a fourth?
Third of an acre?
Quarter, typically it's a quarter and under in Bella Vista.
So what's the road frontage? Let's ask you that, like hundred feet, one hundred and thirty feet, hundred fifty feet?
Around seventy five to a hundred feet is a typical fridge.
Yeah. And, and, and so, and I'm not trying to whittle this down again. It comes back to, you know, the hundred, the hundred feet. I, I wish it was like a mile from my house, but chief, what, what, what it was it before? Is it fifty feet? Is where we were before and now it's a hundred? Can I keep saying, I mean, this is going to really knock out, I'm not for it, but that's going to knock out a lot of lot clearing, burning anyway. Not all of it, but a lot of it, if it's a hundred feet.
Chief doesn't believe there was any foot.
Yeah, there wasn't any fifty foot.
Okay, I, I thought there was something like that. I didn't know.
Now, here's the thing I want to keep in mind. Most of the complaints we get are the, are the large lot burns are within a hundred feet of a structure. So those are the complaints we get. When somebody's burned within a hundred feet of a structure or so, they're calling us and saying, somebody's burning next to my house. So that's the one, that's why a hundred, that's how a hundred feet kind of come into play was we get those, we get the calls from those types of structures or those types of complaints are what we're seeing.
Okay. I think the general consensus is we're not ready yet. There's a great deal of work to be done. Mr. Snow, I'm not sure if you can get this all completed in time for next Monday.
Well, I can, I can tell you that the, these, these edits that I've suggested, I can get done pretty quickly, but if there are more substantive issues, that might take more time, but it's up to y'all.
Mr. Burke, you may want to join the fray by speaking to Mr. Kelly directly. Of course, you can't, you cannot speak to Mr. Snow, but I would encourage all of you, if you have some thoughts to do, consider calling Mr. Kelly and sharing them, but you'll have to do it quickly if we're going to get it on Monday.
I, I, I would suggest that, I mean, I don't want to be the, the arbiter of the debate. What I would suggest is that I, I get this, I, I fix these little things that don't really change the meaning. Get that, get this to what Mr. Snow was wanting to propose. And then it'll be on first reading. And it can be edited and amended later on as you discuss it. So I, I just, it doesn't have to be all rights for me to write it for us to start, I guess is what I'm saying. So I'll offer that.
Alrighty, that's okay with everybody. We'll let Mr. Kelly in conjunction with Mr. Snow move forward. And we'll have a first reading and then we'll have second and third, and we can amend as appropriate. Is that okay? Alright.
Works for me.
Me too.
Okay, C, we've already done. D, amending section one oh nine dash one oh one passenger vehicle parking spaces allowed section one oh nine, one oh four parking for two wheeled motorized vehicles in section one oh nine dash one oh five bicycle parking requirements of the code of ordinances of the city of Bellevista to remove minimum mandated off-street parking space requirements in non-residential developments. To modify other provisions to account for the removal of the requirements and for other purposes. We've talked about this before. It's now coming to you in a more formalized manner. If you haven't done so already, I would encourage you to go through the full section D in your binder and I want to thank CDS for actually putting some highlight boxes circled in red on pages one, two, nine, ten, and twelve, which contains the sailing and points. And Mr. Lynn, I'm going to ask you to take over the conversation, please.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So quick recap, this was heard by the planning commission under a public hearing on the 12th of April. And they recommended this to the city council at that meeting, this ordinance. This is an opportunity to move forward on a, a step in the direction of the comp plan twenty forty. A section of that, under a couple of different goals, calls on the city to review and update our parking standards to promote a number of things, but one is to try to move away from large expanses of of off-street parking lots, the, the JCPenney lots and such of the big box days. And so some benefits of, of this is A, we allow the developer to decide on non-residential construction. So your banks, your, your retail shops, that sort of thing, how much parking they need. And in a city like Bellevista, where we do have in a lot of ways, limited developable areas, we have significant topography in other areas. This will provide not only a benefit to the developer, but I think also to the community and our sense of place that we have. It, it can help one still push a project forward if, if they're meeting all the other requirements of a development ordinance, but pull relief back from having to significantly grade land, flatten our topography, pave more areas. And really help us minimize sprawl development, encourage infill development and mixed use development in some of our areas that have been long slated for commercial activity. And so with this, basically, again, a quick recap is we would retain the requirements for, you know, you have this many numbers of beds with a multifamily development. Those people must have a place to sleep, whatever time of day they do that. So we're not, we're, there's no change to residential multifamily, et cetera. But the other types of developments, commercial, industrial, et cetera, like the, the police chief station out on two seventy nine, those types of developments would be able to decide how many parking spaces they need for regular vehicles. And then it would also go ahead and strike the motorcycle parking requirement because as we see motorcycles, they'll just use a standard parking space. However, if the developer wants a motorcycle space, that's still fine. And then it does a slight modification to the bicycle parking requirements just to make sure we're not losing the intent on that code and making sure that we still have bike, bike racks for even a development that has, say, less than twenty spaces, et cetera. And then I think the last point I would make is that this, this is a trend that we're seeing. You know, the staunch kind of black and white parking code standards that, you know, X number of spaces per blank number of square feet. That worked for a number of decades in a number of communities, but a lot of communities are catching on how, how this more nuanced approach is really is really helping balance a lot of aspects of development and just, we can see this across the country in a number of different jurisdictions, but here locally, we've Fayetteville, Lowell, and also Rogers have taken on similar ordinances. So just want to share that for some local context.
I think the classic, Mr. Lynn, might be the Little Sugar Creek where Allen's is, it's probably the most underutilized parking lot, public parking lot that we have in the city, and it would have been devised years ago based on the original, so many square feet, you had to have so many spaces. And I truly don't think that when a, a retail person is looking at a place of business, they're going to sell themselves short on, on spaces to be able to, you know, attract people in. But I don't think the government has to mandate them how much they should really have. Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I, I did get to follow the planning commission meeting of April twelfth and I'm aware that this, this matter is before the board of zoning adjustments right now. Where we have an applicant in the city who is keen to have less parking spaces at their facility than our ordinances would call for. For me, I'd be content to let this play out with the context of a specific example on the table and let the board of zoning adjustments have their say as to whether or not they feel like that is a good move for this particular application. And then we can kind of come back around to it and say we've seen that conversation play out. We see if that worked or didn't work for the board of zoning adjustments and the planning commission. And we can come back around to this ordinance. I'd like to not take the ball out of their hands at this point, let them follow through on the applicant's request for a waiver on these. Knowing what I know about the, about the specific example before then, it, it really does put a different twist on this rather than just an academic consideration of should we or shouldn't we have parking requirements? And so I appreciate, and I, I heard Chairman Daniel Ellis give a pretty heartfelt account of, of seeing the need to either lower or eliminate the minimum number of parking spaces, leave that up to the commercial business operator. And I do respect that and I do appreciate it. And I do respect that and I do appreciate it. But no, I don't think the planning commission had a full-throated recommendation to come back to the city council. There was never a vote on this. There was some discussion. I heard some opposition to the idea at the planning commission meeting. And I'd like to see all that play out before the city council takes the steering wheel.
Mr. Kelly, I don't think the planning commission would take that into hand, would they? If they wanted to make a change?
The planning commission did conduct a public hearing and they did vote to recommend these changes to the council.
Okay.
There, there, that did occur. Now, the, the, now, Mayor, I didn't quite follow your question, sir.
I, I couldn't remember that they had actually recommended that it go to council, my apologies.
Derek, didn't they? I, I seem to remember they did.
I can speak to a couple of things. We, we do, we would have in the minutes that they supported this. We, we actually held a hearing. It was not a discussion item at April twelve. It was an actual ordinance on the new business items. And they did recommend this to, to council. I do think it's important that since another sort of current application was brought up, it's important that staff takes a minute to address that and respond to that. And I, I'm really glad that that, that came up. Important to keep in mind that this ordinance that we're talking about at work session tonight would really have no bearing on any current applications at play that may be going to the board of zoning adjustment tomorrow night or later this month, because in all reality, this ordinance will not be passed, you know, would not be passed this week nor later this, this month if it goes through the three readings. So. I think it is fair to say that from time to time, when we do see large-scale developments come before us, it, sometimes they can be a learning experience and we can learn, and we can find that some of our ordinances perhaps are, you know, we look at the comp plan and we look at the ordinances and we think, okay, maybe there are some candidates for revising our unit code here, here or there. And that's, that's kind of what this is about, is about a bigger picture, long-term. It's in no way intended to affect any current applications. That developer actually decided to go ahead and move on with their variance application, totally independent of this, of this ordinance. So I just wanted to try to speak, speak to that. And so that, that'll just be considered totally independent of this with the board of zoning adjustment. And they may approve or, or not approve that, that variance later this week.
And I remind you that, excuse me, even after passing through the ordinance, be a fast, fast-tracked or goes for all three, it doesn't become law until ninety days after the, after the publication.
Sixty.
Derek, I had a question.
Wait, I thought you said ninety. I thought it was. Okay. Yes, John.
This is for Derek. With this amendment, proposed amendment, would it change the number of spaces you have to have if you're putting in a restaurant?
It would. That would be considered one of the non-residential type developments. And so in, in that situation, whether it's a, a local restaurant or a chain restaurant, those people are probably going to have a formula in their mind about how many spaces they need to make that space viable for their, for their establishment. But we would be able to tip our hat to them and, and allow them to propose how many they think they need. And then, and then kind of on the back end of how many spaces we would, we would not, we're not proposing to set a max. However, we'd have other allowances in place. You'd still have to provide for appropriate stormwater mitigation. And then there's also maximum amounts that you can development per, excuse me, that you can develop, develop per a zoning district.
Well, the reason I asked that over the last few years, you know, from time to time, there'd be a building come up. And I'd ask the mayor, well, what's happening with that building? And a number of times he said, well, it, it can't be a restaurant because there's not enough parking spaces. So it's been difficult to get a use for it.
That's very true. The classic is, is the corner or the old Delta Bank on the intersection of two seventy-nine and three forty. I don't know how many people have looked at it. And we've had a number of restaurants look at it. It's a little too big for a restaurant. But they've all said the parking is insufficient. It's fine for a bank because people are running in and out all the time. But when you have people coming in and sitting for a meal for a period of time, it's too small. So you're right.
There was, that, that reminds me of a scenario down in Fayetteville where there was a, it was kind of a strip mall type environment. But the, the only units that were occupied for years were the, were the downstairs lower level because city basically had to say, this, this was built, you know, years ago and decades ago possibly. And the whole upper suite was, was vacant because it was, they did not have enough legal parking spaces out in the environment. And then there was no, there's no room to add more parking spaces. So when Fayetteville moved forward with this similar ordinance, it basically opened up and allowed the city permitting office to legally give occupancy permits to those upstairs units for a variety of different uses.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I always said that, in my perspective, there, there is no magical form, formula that's going to fit everybody. I mean, you go to a place that's popular, there's not enough parking. You go to a place that isn't popular, there's way too much parking. And, you know, if, if, if someone is going to invest in developing some type of structure that's going to house a a business and they think they know how much parking they need. If they don't calculate enough and people get tired of not being able to find a parking place, they'll go do business elsewhere. But all I'm saying is that, that there is no magical formula that is, is perfect and fits to every single need at all. This doesn't exist.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Mr. Williams?
I have a question in looking at page two of the document that was sent out. The whereas ordinance thing. It says not to be codified, section five, not to be codified. Shouldn't ordinance amending the code, blah, 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 from one oh nine, moving it to one oh seven is to be adopted contemporary, contemporaneously with or subsequently to the adoption of the ordinance. I'm confused about what the intent of that language is or what we're trying to say there. And Jason may have some thoughts about that. I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm confused by what it's saying.
I'm, I'm going to tell you. So we've got, there were two sets of changes the planning commission recommended. One is this, to remove the minimum mandated non-residential parking.
Okay.
The other is to move certain zoning requirements and put them in the development code to make them development requirements.
And that makes sense.
This, that includes this. So what I was trying to do by that is just, I don't know what order you're going to adopt them in or even if you will. So what this says is, is if you all come back, we're going to, we're making all these amendments to section one oh nine or chapter one oh nine. And what I'm saying is, no matter what order you adopt these in, if you adopt the, the zoning change first from, from zoning to, to development, or if you adopt this, this will be being part of that and we'll move with it. So I don't, otherwise, you know, we'd be making changes to chapter one oh seven, potentially screwing up how we're trying to enact this stuff. Particularly if we adopt them at the very same time and we did not include this paragraph. It could even come down to the order in which they were in the agenda. It, it could, it could really create some confusion. So the point is, play these changes will move to one oh seven if we adopt that order, which moves all this stuff to one oh seven. It's very technical and I'm sorry, it's confusing and I don't know a way not to make it confusing. But it's, it's just to cover it so it lets it, lets it move. Because whether you change these or not, there's going to be another ordinance next month that's going to move it somewhere else. So we've got to account for that.
Okay.
Clear as mud, right, Derek?
Clear as mud.
Anybody else have a few comments or shall we move on? Seeing none, we'll go to item E in your packet. Ordinance adopting procedures for the imposition calculation collection expenditure and administration of impact fees to be imposed on new development. Providing a purpose and intent. Providing definitions, providing general provisions and applicability. Providing for the initial adoption of impact fees. Providing for the establishment of impact fee accounts. Providing for the appropriation of impact fee funds. Providing for refunds. Providing for appeals, providing for conflict. Providing for severability and for other purposes. Mr. Flynn, this is yours.
Okay, I, I want to bring the council up to speed with what's happened since our last meeting and discussions. We went to Tischler Vice, because one of their, part of their initial proposal was that they would draft an ordinance. So we had Tischler Vice draft an ordinance, then it went to Jason Kelly. And Jason Arkansas it, among other things, made sure it was consistent with our state law and and fixed it up. So that's how this came about.
And rolled it in batter and deep fried it.
Yeah, there you go. And it was, that was good. It was, it is consistent with the last proposal that Tischler Vice made, both in the amounts and, and the proposal, I believe it's even an attachment to the document. So my, my point in doing this was to get this thing moving. I know we've had some discussion about it and it was, it was pretty complicated. I think it set council back a little bit. My viewpoint is that we hired these consultants because we wanted to make sure what we were doing was legal and legally defensible. And now they've done their thing and, and we've had something drawn up. So I think the rational thing to do is to move forward with it. But I wanted to get it in front of folks so they could ever, you know, begin to consider it. And Jason, I actually, as I finish up, I did have a, a question on one part of it. Right near the end, it talks about exceptions and waivers and how those would go to a city council. And I was wondering if you could give me an idea of, of what kind of, how that would come up or what kind of things would, what's an example of how that would play out?
I really don't have an example to give you, John. I guess. Let's see.
Just for council, that's page ten.
Yeah, yeah. There is a. I want to look at that more, John, before I give you an answer here off, off the cuff. Because I know there's something in here and I'm not, my eyes aren't going to it immediately. And I've had too many different things going. So let me, let me maybe shoot you back an email or in fact I can reply back to everybody.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Thank you. Other people wish to weigh in on this? Mr. Fowler?
It's not a particular, like weighing in. I mean, I've heard enough. I think I'm pretty well-versed on it now and how it all works. And first I didn't know really how I felt about it, but, you know, I've certainly tended on leaning more towards support, you know, at this particular juncture. So my question is, so we enact the ordinance, we put it in play. And you know what? Maybe it's in here somewhere. I tried to go through everything. So if, once this passes, we would implement the impact fee program. When? After the sixty days and then it would start and we'd start collection of funds. Okay? Is that right?
Yep.
So start populating accounts, right, that have been set up. And then I was just reading that in a procedure for appropriation of impact fees or of impact fee funds. And I guess, so Mayor, when you would go through the budgeting process, at that, sometime prior to that or during the same time, you would identify these additional new, I'm going to say police car, ambulance, whatever it may be, some type of apparatus. And then, so if we had twenty, now we need twenty-one. You could appropriate some of the impact fees toward paying for that additional police car. Is that right? And then how do you deem what percent of that cost of that car comes out of the impact fee fund? Or can you designate that you pay for that additional car completely out of that fund? How, how does that work?
The latter is the way that Kerry and I have been talking.
So it paid for the whole thing?
Yes, or as much of it as we can, yes. Now, in the case of a police car, yes, we should be able to.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm not sure about that. I think, honestly Doug, I think that's a question we need to ask Tischler because I know, when they formulated their, I mean, we've got, these funds can only be used for the, for the, for the impact of additional growth. We've, we've designated what that percentage is of total growth. So I'm thinking that, that we might be capped in terms of that. I, I just, we're kind of just saying this is how, this is how it would say, but I'm not sure about that.
See, that's what I thought I heard.
Okay.
That the new growth, impact fees wasn't meant to pay for one hundred percent of, but a percentage of whatever they're, you know what I'm saying? But I don't know. I just was wanting some clarity because I know, you know, we've got to really, we do this, you know, you certainly want to make sure we, we, we do it right. That's all.
John, do you want to take that back to Tischler, please?
Sure, yeah. If I can put in my two cents worth, I think if it's the situation, let's say we have forty police cars. And now we have to have forty-one. And the reason we have to have forty-one is because of the growth of the city. So that forty-first police car is a hundred percent because of the growth, isn't it? This is one example.
The whole thing.
Yeah, the whole police car is because the city grew.
Right.
Yeah, because we need forty-one instead of forty and that's because the population, the city is bigger than it used to be. That's just one example. I just thought I'd throw that out.
Okay, let's bounce that up Tischler if you don't mind, please.
Yes, I will.
Okay, Mr. Wozniak.
I, you know, I'll probably go with this, even though I'm worried about the paperwork nightmare. If we don't end up spending some of this money after seven years. And the areas when we can actually use it, especially on the street side, when we don't have any virgin ground, but we could actually take a chunk of that and build more roads because that's what it would be, be need for because we can't redo what's already out there. And I, I just think it is, our restrictions are going to be pretty tight. We may have troubles trying to spend some of that money. And then you've got to look about the paperwork nightmare while getting some of it back. Not saying that'll happen. But it's a possibility because of all the restrictions that are on what you can actually do with this money. Just like the, the extra squad car. You know, we may need an extra squad car, but if we're buying an extra squad car just because we want, want to nobody to put in it. I mean, if you got forty and they're all running, you got X number in your fleet for, for backup. So all of a sudden, why do we have to have this extra car if there's nobody going to be in it? You know, I tell you, we can't do that, but that's just something to think about. And my, like I said, my biggest thing is the all the restrictions as to how you can actually use the. It's between a rock and a hard place.
Okay, Mr. Williams, I think you wanted to chat about this.
I, I have a, a couple of comments. One is I noticed when we, when we reviewed the report from them that they have some arithmetic rounding issues in there. And I don't know if that's going to cause us any grief or not. I could see where it might. If somebody were to go through with a fine point pen. But the other concern that I had is that, how are we going to account for this? As I understand, we have seven, what is it, seven years from dollar in to dollar out? Is that the running seven-year period?
Yes.
So i- is it, is it based on the actual physical date? Or do we take a, a calendar year and say, okay, everything we collect in year one has to be spent in the eighth year?
Rolling.
Or by the seventh year? How, the accounting process is what I'm confused about.
Mr. Kelly?
Going to be rolling. So it's a constant rolling. So.
So is it a month, a month?
Then or the first dollar spent?
I understand, I understand that. But let's say, right now we're doing what? Let's say for round numbers, three hundred and sixty building permits a year. So three hundred and sixty, that's.
Just round it off. Make it three hundred and sixty thousand.
Let me say that. I don't have any business answering that question. That's a financial question. That really needs to be asked of Kerry or the finance director or perhaps even Tischler on a recommendation of how it should be accounted for. But I can't answer that.
So because as we go through the year, we have more permits in one month than we do in another month, et cetera, et cetera. And so to keep that running number out, somebody's got. to keep that running number out, somebody's got to keep tracking that. And if it's a day to day thing rather than a month to month or a year to year, that becomes a real nightmare. And I think there's got to be some practical, legal wise, some practical means of accounting for that. Is it a month to month thing after we reach seven years or is it a six months or a quarter or a one year on a time?
John, that's another question for Tischler, please.
Okay.
Kerry and I have had a similar conversation. But since many cities are using impact fees, there must be a tried and true thing. But Larry's right, we should get it clarified.
I agree. It's got to be manageable. I think it will be manageable. I think every time we make a deposit into the account that we're going to collect these things in, every time we make a deposit, that deposit has a date associated with it. And seven years from that date, that money has to be spent or returned.
That's, that's the way that we've been approaching it. But I think it, you know, it'd be wise to go back to the source of all knowledge. And that's Tischler Vice. Mr. Snow?
Let's say five years from now, the, the council that's in the place at that time decides that, hey, this is just not a good deal. This is more problem than it's worth, et cetera, whatever the reasons might be. We want to terminate this program. What happens? Is all the money collected at that time have to be refunded?
No, I don't think you'd phrase it and spend your way through it.
I, I, I think you probably would phase it. I don't know. I think that may have been what the mayor said. And that is you might stop collecting it.
Yes.
Still use it for a period of time until you roll it out. I think you probably could do that.
I would agree. Okay, anybody else? John, you have a few questions to ask Carson, if you would, please.
Okay, yeah, I'll get that, get some more info for you by next week.
And if you want to send it out to Wayne and then he can send it out to council, please.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you. Okay. Everybody okay? All right. So we'll move into the world of resolutions. The first is amending the 2021 city budget to appropriate $29,500 in undesignated reserve funds to the administrative department budget to fund the city contract with the Bella Vista Business Association. This is a housekeeping item. It should have been added on to the resolution that we had prior. And so we need to make this allocation from the budget to the, the Bella Vista Business Association. So my apologies, we should have tacked this on, on the last resolution. Mr. Williams?
Would it be appropriate to amend that resolution number with this addition then for clarification and tracking?
The, the, the original thing you passed this month was a bid waiver ordinance. That in terms of tracking it, I mean, I think the language of the resolution for you does that, you, you basically agreed to the contract, but you didn't amend the budget to put the extra money in. It takes the money out of the reserve. One, to end that contract which you approved by bid waiver. That's what it does.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the next resolution. Is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a three year lease contract with Stronghold Data LLC in an amount not to exceed $14,524.07 for the lease of Dell computers and associated equipment. The word lease is key. That's why we have to come to council anytime that there is a lease involved. This is part of our IT strategy and John is with us here tonight. We roll everything over after five years so that we don't have any boat anchors and we lease for the same reason and it keeps us current. John, any, any comments?
Not enough major to add. This will be kind of a routine thing now. This was the fourth year. We've been doing this and we have a three year preferred life on PCs. And a maximum life of five years. So you know, the lease lets us use them for three years and then we have a place to go with them. We can send them back to Dell. Refresh.
Mr. Wozniak?
Is this for all three years or 14,000 a year?
That's broken up over three years.
Okay, so divide this by three.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have, this might be a long fair, it's, it's an unrelated question, you know. Because of recent things that have happened in the world, I've always been worried about, like a lot of people, about cybersecurity issues. And you know, y'all, I was here about, you know, everyone knows about this colonial pipeline problem. But I also read recently, for instance, Gary, Indiana has a huge problem. And I know we've taken a lot of steps to have backup and whatnot. So all these people that, like Gary, Indiana and some of these other cities have had to pay ransoms and whatnot. Are they just not as smart as us and our IT guys? I mean, are there steps they should have taken, they just didn't take and we've taken those steps?
Don't say that.
Well, yeah, at the risk of, of perhaps jinxing, yes. We are probably further ahead than a lot of cities. John came out of the corporate world and as a result, he has lived this life and the insanity that goes on with the increased hacking. And he has put things in place. I, I don't want to actually say what's in place for obvious reasons. But John, perhaps you could talk about some of the tests that have been done to test the network.
Yeah, kind of answer your question, John. The larger the city, the more layers are to the onion, you know. Here at Bella Vista, we don't have public transportation. We don't have water system. We don't have utilities and what you run into is a lot of those industrial control systems are millions of dollars to replace. And you also have to kind of fix the plane while it's flying sometimes. So that's why they tend to lag behind, you know, those industrial control systems that can control the pipeline or control the electric grid, whatever, you know, you're talking sometimes, you know, millions and millions of dollars to upgrade. So we're not in that situation. We're fortunate enough where we have smaller systems. And we're also fortunate, I think, in Northwest Arkansas to have more money than a lot of places have. So. But yeah, we have taken a multi-layered approach to security. We have better filtering on our email than we had in previous years. We have an enterprise backup system. We've had third parties do penetration testing to see if they can break in. And we've also increased our user education because I would say that sometimes people are the weakest link. So we have purchased tools in the last couple of years to help increase cyber awareness among our employees. So it's definitely a multi-layered approach and also keeping things up to date is a big part of it. You know, because those, it's usually those older operating systems, they, they've had time to figure out the vulnerabilities in them. So that's why we like replacing everything every three to five years.
One of the things John found, for example, soon after he joined us, was there was a piece of, of hardware that was connected to the network that was old XP, which is very, very vulnerable. And so once we found that, we corrected that immediately because that was just a hacker's invitation to get into the place. And that was what, about three or four years ago, John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think that's the, you know, the big challenge is, you know, the specialized equipment, you know, that may be specific to, I don't know, law enforcement or utilities or things like that, you know, those systems, you can't give them a best buy. They're, you know, highly specialized and very, very expensive. So.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, if they can penetrate our government at the highest levels, I don't know if you guys are aware of that. I think you probably are. But I'm talking about, I think it was Russia, this has just happened recently. It was on 60 Minutes and they don't know how to get this virus out of their, out of the system. Secondarily, man, heightened personal awareness is, is like huge. These guys are so clever. You know, we have all Apple, everything we have. And my wife, she was opening up an email the other day and she got a virus alert, right? And she closed it down, deleted the email and about 10 minutes later, on her Mac, a message pops up and it's, it's an Apple screen. It's just like Apple said, you know, further protect your PC, click here to run your virus protection program on your Mac. And I was like, this is like 10 minutes later, I said, no, so call Apple, let's check this out. Called Apple, the guy came on the line, he said, it's a, it's a, it's a fraud. It's a setup. Let's get on your machine and get this cleared up like right now. I mean, if you would have saw it, it looked so official, you know? So, you know, just always be aware.
Yep, it's true. All right, anybody else? Okay, let's move on. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with VanCon Properties LLC in an amount not to exceed $2,700, which is $100 per week for 27 weeks for the lease. And there's the magic word again, of space for the Bella Vista Farmers Market. The Farmers Market just finished its, its second Sunday. It has proved to be very successful. The parking lot's full. We're getting more vendors every week. We are paying VanCon $100 a week. The main reason is when we were down at Little Sugar, we had our own electrical meter for all the food trucks. And we don't have a meter per se. There are four different plugins that are all connected to VanCon's electrical bill. And it's very difficult to try and delineate. So we just took a stab and said, for the use of all the electrical outlets, let's stick with $100 a month and see where it takes us from there. So we'll have a look at it at the end of the season. We really don't know. We did have our first truck in there last week or yesterday, and it was sharpening of, of tools and knives. And Mrs. Moser tells me that she's getting at least two food trucks in there. So we'll see that increase as well. But I'm delighted that the residents have just flocked to this thing. In fact, the first Sunday, there were three fresh vegetable vendors and they ran out of produce in three hours. I haven't heard how they're doing or how they did yesterday. There were actually four of them when I was up there. But it's turned out to be just a great event for our, our great city. Are there any thoughts, Mr. Williams?
The first week they got rained out, so they ended up closing up really. I think they would have done really well otherwise. I think that's a great location. It has good visibility by the public as compared to where we've had them in the past. I think that helps the visibility as well as the marketability of the vendors who come in. And it's a, it's an easy space to get into. It's an easy space to park. I think it's great.
And Duffers agreed to stay open on, on the Sunday. And I think they're very happy that they decided to do so as well. And you're right, it, it's fairly easy to get in. It's fairly easy to get out. It's visible. And the traffic count, according to our doc, because that's a state highway, is about 4,400, 4,500 cars a day. Mr. Snow?
I was just going to say, from what I've seen on social media, it seems like it's been very popular. Great attendance. And I was going to ask about what thoughts were as to why it was so much more popular and and the attendance was much greater at this location than in the previous location. But Mr. Williams may have already answered those questions unless you have something else to add.
Well, it is the geographic center of the city, believe it or not. I think we're getting people, for example, coming out of church over at St. Bernard's, which has a very large population. So once church is finished, they can come over. As I mentioned, there is a breakfast place there, which is Duffers. The first day, Larry, gosh, I think it was 9:30 and they were lined up out the door trying to get in. At, at the previous locations, there wasn't anything other than Javadudes. But this is an actual sit down place or carry out. And they have a much more extensive menu than Javadudes has. I just think it's a darn good location.
I talked to Brandon and we're, we're going to get it up on, on our AMP site, probably here just in the next couple of days. So we're, we're going to go ahead and move forward with that. You know, this is probably neither here nor there, but I, I was reading the contract and it says use of premises. It's point six. It said premises shall be used exclusively for the purpose of a farmer's market herein referred to as a market which sells locally produced food items to the community and to operate said market within the location defined. And, and I, you know, I'm not trying to like split hairs or anything, but it says to sell produce or locally produced food items. But obviously there's more, going to be a more wide range of crafts and things like there as well, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess there are no issue with the verb, the wording of the.
There will, there will be, there will be locally sourced produce there, but it doesn't preclude the fact that there could be other things there too.
Okay.
All righty, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the next resolution, authorizing the mayor and, excuse me, authorizing the city staff attorney to initiate legal proceedings against Cooper Community, Inc.'s any parent or subsidiary company and/or any of its officers or directors to facilitate condemnation and possession of property interest necessary to secure water access for purposes of fire protection at the proposed new city public safety building. Mr. Kelly?
Well, as we talked at our work session, I guess it was last month, I gave you of the difficulty we've been having with CCI on this issue. At that time, we had sent a letter with a deadline in it. And we were awaiting a response. We did get a letter of response. It was not positive. I've submitted that a letter to all of you. I believe you've all had an opportunity to see that. They made their statements and, and still were discussing zoning issues and, and other matters. Now, one, one, I guess you want to call it a glimmer was that they did want to talk, but their talk is about their zoning issue. And so we've made it clear that we're not going to link those two items. We are awaiting some technical information from Chief Graves's engineers on the project so that we can clearly define the area we're talking about in terms of the condemnation. In order to meet the requirements of law to, to exercise them in a domain, we at least have to make a good faith offer for the property interest we're taking to the owner. And so we are going to be able to, depending on the circumstances, we'll either have to get an appraisal or we'll work off an appraisal we've got for an adjoining property in which to make that good faith estimate and offer. We've learned that from a technical perspective, at least we talked about it this morning, the easement situation and the location of the pipe and other issues are, as it was told to me, a mess. And so we don't know if that means the pipe is not in the easement or if the pipe is not in an easement. Or if the pipe's in the right of way, or even if the right of way has been fully dedicated. Those are all issues that are being title searched and are going to be presented to us and which will have a bearing on what all we need to, to seek in this condemnation. As we talked internally about this, they're really, what we're looking at is three options here. One is to add to the project and build a half million dollar water tank to facilitate the fire protection. And then potentially sue Cooper Communities for the damages related to our increased expense. I think that is not a very, it's not a guaranteed path and it's not 100% clear path, but it is a path. Number two is condemning certain covenant interest in the property where the, where the land or where the pipe is currently located. With the idea that potentially there's an argument that that, that taking in fact is non-compensable. But in any event, condemning it, if we have to pay, we have to pay. So that we can then clear the way and authorize a connection by the POA to our fire, fire suppression line. Third is potentially would still involve condemnation with Cooper, but it would be. but it would be running a fire protection water line, not out to the highway, but back through the neighborhood, which is to the immediate east, where the city would then in turn need to acquire a vacant lot over there that is in the POA so that we could run the fire water line east over the 10-foot Cooper strip of property, which we would have to condemn across POA common property through an agreement, which they've been, appeared willing to grant. And then on to this vacant lot where we'd be a member and have legal access to the water, which the POA could then in turn provide. Had a meeting with the POA last week to discuss a memorandum of understanding with them whereby we can get on paper the commitments we're going to make regarding them providing us water. If we take these condemnation act, this condemnation action against the POA, against Cooper Communities, excuse me. The POA again has been very cooperative. I had a little brief communication with their attorney today. They expect to have a couple of suggested minor edits to that draft document. And then we'll be in a, in a good position to move forward with that. We want that to be in place before we initiate legal proceedings so that we have a guarant, ironclad guarantee or as ironclad as as much as we're talking about words on paper to be able to connect to that water, assuming we take these actions we're considering through condemnation with CCI. So I guess this, this is going to be an authorization for me to initiate those legal proceedings. I would still tell you that there is some minor hope that it might not be required. I think that's probably not realistic at this point, but in any event, if we could solve the problem without doing it, we would certainly attempt to do so. It, depending on whether or not we decide to go the route we've planned or through the neighborhood, it's going to require some sort of a condemnation against Cooper unless they start volunteering to cooperate, which I do not anticipate. So when, once I get the technical information from the engineer on our original plan, I think the, the administration is going to need to make a decision of we definitely want to go route one, route two, or route three. It looks like it's going to be our original plan. There is some additional expense related to going to the neighborhood, more so than the potential risk, I think, of what we'd have to pay for what we're going to have to take in the original plan. So this is unfortunate, but we do have the power of eminent domain. And we believe if we exercise it against this covenant interest in this limited area, even though it is going to be hard to define a value, ultimately jury would have to do that. This is unfortunately become necessary because as, as is in the draft, it appears that Cooper has turned back on its word and reneged on the commitments that we received. And so this is going to be necessary. If we don't do this, we run a lot of risk to the taxpayers, least of which is going to be dramatically increased cost because of potential delays or, or replanning of the project or just general delays because of the price fluctuation and volatility, volatility we're seeing in the construction materials market currently. It also, delay is going to risk public safety because we need to have a functioning police department out there in a court to provide public safety, which is the entire purpose of this. And a delay of that risks public safety by definition. And so this is very unfortunate, it's regrettable. I would go out and say it's totally unnecessary because they could do this without any cost to them and they won't.
Just, I'm sorry, Mr., you know, thank you. Just to add a little more color to this as well. Mr. Lynn, we have received, what is it, thirteen rezoning requests from CCI?
Yes, sir. The count comes to just under at eleven. But very significant, it's an unprecedented amount for CDS to, to ever take on. I think prior to this, this middle of applications, I don't know if we've even had eleven, you know, in the recent history of the city. So very significant and we're staying on top of it. But each one of those to advertise, we've been in touch with Attorney Kelly on this, but the legal descriptions are very long. So in some of them, the application fee costs this much and the legal announcement costs even, even more than that. But there's nothing we can do about that at this point. They, you know, if, if they're complete applications, we're, we're told we're to process them. But, but yeah, and rezones, lot splits, they're asking things from us at CDS all, all the time. So it's, it's very interesting.
One thing I'd like to add is it's very important that we not, that from the city's perspective, we, even though we know Cooper Communities is addressing these, addressing these issues together. It is very critical for the city to not do that. And I'll, I'll, I'll add this and I'll say this, winter, if these issues come before the council, first of all, there, there will be eleven public hearings that are planning commission meeting, eleven ordinances for you to consider as we move forward. And I, I just want to say this. These, these rezonings, when they come, if, assuming they come forward to you, will need to be considered along the same grounds and on the same considerations that I've always told you. We cannot deny their rezoning because they've made us mad. Okay? Cannot deny their rezoning because they won't give us water. We cannot do that. We have considerations I provided to you in memos. I know I got them at one point or another, if you need another I can give it to you of what you can consider. But I, I feel, I feel like we're on good ground now in terms of our zoning regulation. But if we go out and we act capriciously, which is what I'm saying, or arbitrarily and deny these rezonings based on factors which we cannot consider, we will allow them to beat us in court. And we will allow them to pay their attorneys to do so. We do not want that. So we don't want to take a good position that we're in and really make it lousy by going down that road. So I think everybody knows what's going on here, but we're going to take these, these applications, we're going to consider each one of them. They're all going to get their legal public hearing. They're going to be considered by planning commission as any other rezoning would be. And they'll eventually make their way to you and we'll make that consideration on, as we do on every other rezoning, based on the factors that we always consider. So I want to say that right now, warn you there and you'll hear me say that again, okay? So it may, we may be in the heart of legal warfare, but we still have to act neutrally as the government toward our property.
Thank you. Well stated, Mr. Flynn.
I had a question. That recent zoning change that Cooper wanted, where we did some of the acreage, but not as much acres as they want, did that make them mad or anything?
They didn't appeal it to court. I know that time has passed on an appeal for that rezoning. And for that matter, their arguments about our zoning ordinance are about 13 years overdue. Well, 10 maybe, if you count the, the three-year statute limitation. So, but anyway, no, as far as I know, I, I will say this and maybe Derek knows more about this. In fact, maybe the mayor knows more about this. I get the feeling that we annoy them by doing anything. Not necessarily that we did that, but that we are here doing things. And then it gets in the way. That's the impression I've gotten. But the mayor has had communication with them much more often than, than I have, of course, but that appears to be the direction it goes in. Now, when we have, let me add this, we have applications from them and when they come to our meetings, it's very polite, very professional, I'm not going to suggest otherwise, but I'm talking about at certain staff levels. It's just, I mean, when, when they, when they basically file zoning protections and they more or less say that their property interest outweigh the government's ability to regulate them. They're basically saying the government doesn't, can't do anything to them at all. And so I don't think you have to be a lawyer to hear that and say, whoa. Wait a minute. So that's, that's their perspective. I'm sure if they had a representative saying something in rebuttal of what I'm saying, they would say, oh, no, of course not, that's not what we're saying. We're, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about our, you know, I don't know. I know what I read and I know where we are right now. And I know that what can solve this safety issue for the city, they just won't do.
What had been, what had been explained to me, John, by, by CCI was that they had no idea that their reserved properties had been zoned as P. And that, that one particular piece that came in front of council a couple of months ago was their first exposure to the zoning of their reserved properties as a
That's their allegation. And I can tell you from a very lengthy Freedom of Information Act request we received from Little Rock Law Firm, which I think was probably related to them. We had multiple, we had legal public notice was issued back 13 years ago, 12 years ago, whenever it was. The map has been available and they've come to us for various rezonings in the past, if you recall. The PZD we did over here at Dogwood. So they're generally familiar with the fact we have zoning requirements. Our zoning map has been available for years online. It's also, it's obviously been available since it's been adopted. So they may make those allegations, but and, and say we didn't really know, but if they didn't know, it's because they weren't paying attention.
So what I basically said to them was we will work with you to help you any, you know, with any of your rezoning, but it cannot be tied to water. And we will go through the steps. It will have to go in front of the planning commission, each and every one of them. And then it'll have to go to council for three readings. And we'll just take it from there. It's just normal business and that's what we do and this type of thing.
I will add this, given the state of, of the relationship, if in, in full consideration of the facts, the council may determine that a rezoning is not warranted. That's your legislative decision. They will sue us. They're going to appeal that and sue us. Now, that doesn't change what you need to do, but I just want you to be prepared that what we're entering into with this situation.
All right, questions before we move on? Okay. We'll move into the next resolution. Mr. Williams, did you want to say something?
Yeah, the bottom line really is that all of the boards and commissions and councils that are involved in processing applications for doing this or doing that need to follow their rules and guidelines and the city ordinances. And if they're deficient, they need to be identified and delayed or otherwise processed in that manner. If they're complete and they meet the, the intent of the city and their land use plan that we've adopted in the 2040 plan and our, and our zoning code currently, we need to process it straight up on the table and, and not to take any punitive views or actions regarding it. And that goes for the council as well as the planning commission. They shouldn't be intimidated by the action of getting, what, 11 or whatever applications coming in for a rezone. They shouldn't, shouldn't be intimidated in their actions to approve if it doesn't meet the merits and the warrants of our, of our adopted plans.
That is correct. And I suspect, and I suspect 11 is only the tip of the iceberg. They have given us a list of some 61 properties that have all been zoned as P. But we'll just take it as it comes and be very professional and do what we always do and don't deviate from it.
Yep.
You're right.
I'm, I'm not, well, by saying we would get, we're going to go to court if it gets denied, it may need to be denied. What the reason, I just want to make
Exactly, right.
The clear reasons that it doesn't meet the master plan or it doesn't, you know, any of the legitimate considerations that we have. Because when I step in court and I'll be glad to do it, I'm going to say, no, it wasn't arbitrary and capricious. It's based on this. We talked about that. It's related to land, it's related to topography, it's related to neighboring properties. It's related to the plan, it's related to the street acting, all that stuff. And then, because when we don't do that, that's when we get in trouble. So you as a council shouldn't be intimidated either, as much as the staff shouldn't. You shouldn't be intimidated, but unfortunately, doesn't matter what you do, sometimes you're going to end up in court. And I, I see this as one of those situations, unfortunate.
Okay. The next resolution, expressing appreciation to the Bella Vista city staff for having demonstrated flexibility and commitment to maintaining a high standard of services to Bella Vista residents during the height of the pandemic for 2020 and 2021. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. These are simple but important gestures of appreciation for the council. We've had a number of comments, I think even in our last city council meeting, we got to celebrate a little bit with Chief Sims about the letter from the governor. So I, I know there's this kind of feeling about the city staff and, and the good work that they've done for the residents of Bella Vista. And this is just a way for us to recognize that by way of resolution. There, there's nothing to it other than city council expressing appreciation for all that they did, for the flexibility that they demonstrated, for really, in many cases, taking on risks that, that a normal person wouldn't have to take on because of the nature of their jobs. So there are several whereas's here, you can read them for yourself. But I thought it was just a simple way for us to, to express our appreciation for what the city staff has been through.
Right, this will dovetail nicely throughout the pandemic. And as, as recently as in April, I've been sending out emails to all employees, thanking them for their commitment and their dedication, encouraging them to take all precautions that are necessary. Whenever a decision has been made such as closing City Hall last November, I send something out to them, I send out regular quarterly updates for our finance. And I've, I've always been assuring them that there will be no layoffs and no furloughs. And above all, I've been thanking not only our employees, but their families as well for their support. The families have been just terrific. So I think this, this dovetails nicely, the council will also thank them as a group. Any questions?
There will be, I was just going to add also, there will be a couple of tweaks. I see the placeholder I had in there for a thousand vaccinations, the number is really over 10,000 vaccination, vaccinations have been given. Chief Sims also suggested a little broader recognition for others who participated in the vaccination program. So I'd like to reflect that as well as add in mention of the families of our city staff who are also in many cases put under some hardship by the flexibility required of the city employees.
That's great. So you'll work with Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Burke? Okay, we'll move into the last resolution, which is expressing appreciation to Bella Vista food and grocery workers for having demonstrated extreme flexibility and personal commitment while maintaining a high standard of essential food services to Bella Vista residents during the height of the pandemic of 2020 and 2021. Mr. Burke, that's yours as well?
Yes, sir. It's in similar vein, just I think we all figured out how essential the food and grocery workers are, how, how much they went through to keep Bella Vista residents in good supply of everything we needed to get through the pandemic. And it didn't come without some extraordinary efforts on the part of our food and grocery workers. So just a simple way to say, we see you, we appreciate you. Thank you for what you did during the pandemic for the residents of Bella Vista.
Any questions for Mr. Burke? Mr. Flynn?
Hey, just a quick question. By the phrase food and grocery workers, are you including restaurant workers in that?
You know, I, I didn't in this case. I, I tried to with the first one, call out that we have two full-service grocers. We have five convenience stores, well, and multiple restaurants. So yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't answer that correctly. Yes, and multiple restaurants in the first one. So everybody in that category, if you're a food or service worker and you, you went the extra mile to, to serve the residents of Bella Vista during the pandemic, I think it's worthy of our appreciation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Are these going, are these going to be presented in some manner to, like to the, the, the workers at maybe Allen's and Harps or in the different places, are they going to be presented or is this just going to be simply a, something that's going to be in the news media?
They, they could be, there, there aren't plans for that. Wanted to start off and see, you know, if city council felt to recognize these, these workers, it could, it could very well be. It could be something that the mayor may want to help make these presentations. make these presentations on behalf of the city council.
Looks like it wouldn't have much meaning if you don't do some kind of a presentation.
For for sure, it needs to be, you know, something that filters down, not just published in the paper or published in our minutes, so I think I think you're right. Jerry, that we we ought to figure out if if this does in fact get approval, that we ought to figure out what what's the right way to share this information. It's probably easier to do with the city staff because we have email and and a way to communicate that. But in the case of the food and grocery workers, it would be, it might be not a nice gesture for for one or more of the city councillors or represented by Mayor Christie to make that presentation.
Good. Okay. I have one more discussion item for you, and that's to update you on the American Rescue Plan, as you may have heard from past discussions. Our city is supposed to get somewhere in the neighborhood of five and a half million dollars. I was on two conference calls with the AML last week, the federal treasury on the tenth actually published a hundred and fifty-one pages of guidance as to how you can spend it and where you can spend it, et cetera, et cetera. And it it has created about as many questions more than it was supposed to answer. And and the and the municipal league and and the Association of Counties are working with National League of Cities, et cetera, trying to get more clarification. But here's some of the stuff that I I have picked up. By December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the money must be obligated, now the money is going to come to the recipients, that's cities, state council, cities, counties and states in two in two segments over two years, so basically fifty fifty, so we get two point seven five, two point seven five roughly. So the first date that's critical is by December the thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, all the dollars must be obligated. And by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, all the dollars must be spent. Now, what can they spend it on, that's still a huge question mark, which they haven't defined clearly. They have said COVID-related expenses, water, sewer and broadband. And we don't know what all that means yet, what does water mean, for example, does it mean that we can address drainage issues? So I have asked that question of AML for them to pass it along because we have a problem down on Pinion Drive where there's about a quarter mile from the northwest corner of the road that is right beside TH Rogers down to the cement plant is a disaster. It was never built right in the first place and a lot of it is drainage issues, we had Garber come in. It will cost us over a million dollars to fix it correctly so that we don't have a collapse of the road later on in the years, can we use these dollars for that project is the very direct question that I have asked. I haven't had an answer because I don't think anybody has all the answers yet. Can we use it for just normal new culverts that we might want to put in? I don't have an answer for that either, but I have asked the question. What would a partnership look like with the broadband carriers like Cox and AT&amp;T? How would you put that together? And again, I've asked the question with no answer, I've been looking at other cities that have done something similar, but nobody has really done the, let's get the service into various dead zones inside the city as opposed to Clarksville, for example, that started off running fiber to all their utilities, then they decided to run fiber to the whole city and they would own the fiber, I don't want to become a telecommunications carrier, I came from that business, I think Mr. Burke did as well. I don't want to go there, but I am willing to go into a partnership to help them pay to get the cable into the neighborhoods, but I don't know what that looks like, so I've asked that question as well. The money is not reimbursable, but, and it's a big but, a city of our size has to provide an annual report back to the federal government, the first one is actually due in October of this year, which is our expenses that we have actually incurred up till the end of of September. Well, we don't have the money yet, so we haven't incurred any expenses, and in fact, AML is saying until we get all these questions answered, once you get the money and if it's still lingering questions, put it in the bank and don't spend it. And in speaking to all the other mayors, that's exactly what they're doing. The annual report, however, for the larger, excuse me, the reports for the larger cities and the counties is quarterly. So at least we get a bit of a break in the paperwork. There's no match required by us. The governor has appointed an ARP committee of fourteen people because they have to figure out how do they get the money to cities with populations of less than fifty thousand? If it's greater than fifty thousand or counties, it's coming direct to their bank accounts from the feds. In fact, Judge Morin told me this morning, they've already received their fifty percent, which is twenty-seven million. And at this point, all he's done is he's just put it in the bank because there are too many outstanding questions. Ours, however, flows through the state and the state has yet to figure out how are they going to do that? It has been made very clear by the feds, the state cannot put any earmarks on it, they cannot take any of the money away from us. They cannot charge fees, it had, but they want it to flow through the state. There is also a requirement that we and all cities stick to the uniform code of grants, now luckily we have some experience with this from the CARES Act because we had to go through that as well. But the difference with the CARES Act is we had to justify everything upfront before we got the money, this time they're giving us the money and then we have to go back in in an annual report and say, well, this is what we spent the money on. Well, if they say, no, I'm sorry, that doesn't qualify, then you have to pay them back. And that's why it's crucial that we get everything clarified upfront before we start anything at all. There are some illegible, excuse me, some expenses that you cannot use these monies for, one is to deposit funds into any kind of pension or offsetting a reduction in net revenue from a change in the law, regulation or administrative interpretation. You can partner with other cities and and counties on similar projects if it makes sense to do so. Here's the kicker, we keep hearing about, there's another bill that's going to be put forward on infrastructure which includes broadband, for example. So the big question is, and I've asked this as well, should we wait for the second one? And they can't answer it because we don't even know what it looks like, or should we spend all our money on this first one, only to discover that the second one would have been better in the first place? So there's that kind of question that's going on, plus the infrastructure is going to include bridges and roads. Does that take care of Pinion Drive? I don't know, nobody knows at this point. There are basically one, two, three, four different areas where the guidance says that you can spend money. One is indirect costs, which are overhead and such as janitorial, heating, photocopying, et cetera, during that period. There's revenue loss and that won't work for us because we didn't see a revenue loss, if anything, we saw a revenue gain. I spoke to a council member Fowler today because there's been discussion about how do we supplement the loss that the AMP commissions might have have incurred and to my delight, Doug tells me they've been doing well year over year, so congratulations to the AMP for reaching out and bringing people to our city. There's something called premium pay, but it's not a bonus. And nobody really knows what it means, so that has to be worked out. And then there's water, sewer and broadband and broadband infrastructure, which I mentioned a few minutes ago. The question was asked, if you don't have utilities or you want to help a nonprofit, are you able to subaward money to them? The answer from the AML is yes, but we as the grantor are on the hook to make sure that they spend the money properly so that we can report that back to the feds, so it's not as easy as it looks. All is to say, I'm sure there are going to be a lot more Zoom calls in my life talking about this. AML has said that they're going to set up regular weekly calls on this commencing on Wednesday, June the second at two PM in the afternoon. It'll be like the Affordable Care Calls that we had on a weekly basis, I don't know if any of you participated on those calls, but they got rather intricate at times and rather complex. But I will certainly let you know the first time that I get notification of the meetings and I'll send it out to you so that if you want to attend, you can do so. So while it seems like a great thing that we're going to get all the money, there are still a lot of questions as as to what we can do with it. But at least the dates are clear that it has to be obligated by the end of twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty-six. So I know all of us have questions, I'm sorry I don't have answers, but I at least wanted to let you know that there are conversations going on. And I I talked to all the other mayors, there's about nine of us that get on a call every Wednesday. And we've been talking about this now for about a month and waiting for this guidance and and last week they're just as confused as as we are, just as confused as the county and the municipal league, so. Stand by for more, if I get more, I will certainly fire it out to you so that you're kept abreast of what's happening.
I did get to join the end of that last Arkansas Municipal League meeting where they were giving the readout on that. And and they are really, they're all over it, so they're they're really earning their keep, I think, for us, working on our behalf to get clarification on all these things. And then they're going to disperse it to us, so I really am appreciating the the Arkansas Municipal League, especially in this case.
Exactly, and I think it's really helped that we cut our teeth too, Steve, on the on the on the CARES Act. Mr. Wills?
Who at the league is spearheading the the effort down there, is there one or more people?
There's a team of five that's being headed by your chief counsel, who is John Wilkerson. John was also spearheading or did spearhead the CARES Act, so this is, I guess, his second rodeo. Any other questions that I might be able to answer? Okay, that's it, thank you very much. See you Monday, bye bye.
Thank you.